Recording in progress.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the San Mateo County Harbor District Board of Commissioners for November 15th. Can we have a roll call, please?
President Zemke.
Here.
Commissioner Matusch. Commissioner Donneret.
Here.
Commissioner Jane Crowley.
Present.
Commissioner Slater-Carter.
Present.
Okay. First off, we have a public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the Commission on items that are not on the agenda. Unfortunately, we are not able to take remote comments at this time, but we do have some people in the audience in person that would like to make comments. Sherri Ingalls.
There's some staff and all you. I'm Sherri Ingalls. I'm the owner of Half Moon Bay Sport Fishing at the harbor. We've been there 18 years in the building, 33 years on the harbor. Over half my life has been there. I have three items that I'd like to touch base on. I can't stay late because I have to take care of other things, so one of the items is actually on the agenda. Hopefully, it's okay to say that. First of all, the harbor meetings at 10:00 in the morning, middle of the week, really doesn't offer the working public an opportunity to have their voice heard. The Zoom was a powerful tool. It really could, I think, still could be used if rules were put in place, or maybe there could be some way of having advanced recordings so people could at least make comments at some form. Back in the early 2000s, so like 2005, over in South San Francisco, we used to have 80, excuse me, 30, 40 people at times at these meetings. Very important meetings where people were able to hear and discuss and be part of the Commission process. I think it would behoove the Commission to really consider to either move the meetings back to the evening so others can attend, or figure out a way to make Zoom work. I think it would really be good. Now, it's kind of bugged me. As far as the rents that are reported for the tenant spaces, they always report that we're paying like a penalty amount of money. Well, we have a whole whopping 600 square foot of space to try to make enough money to survive and pay the harbor. I wish that our rent was as low as it's reported, but we actually pay percentage rent that is never considered, never put in there. I don't really want to, but I just don't want the public to think that we are taking advantage in any way of the harbor. We're doing what we can. The more that we make, the more the harbor makes because it's based on our gross sales, not our net, our gross sales. And our percentage rate is always much higher than the base rent. So just to throw that out there. Now, the important one is tenant, the tenant building remodeling or replacement. I have not heard or been touched base with, and I believe Cassandra over at Mavericks and the new tenants as well, haven't heard any word about the cost or the plans of relocating all of our tenants while the old building is being torn down. Is it going to be temporary containers? Is it temporary buildings? How are we going to get electricity, gas, water, sewers, bathroom, phones, internet? And then where is it going to be? Where's the location in the harbor going to be while this takes place? Then there's also the cost of moving. All, everything we have be moved out, put into something, and then moved back so we don't have to move not just once, but twice. That's a lot of cost. I really think that the new building should be built first. It just makes a heck of a lot more economic and common sense as far as I'm concerned. Once you build the new building, you can then tear it down or refurbish the old. There's some reason that tear it down. I want it down. It can't be here anymore. That building is rock solid. That building was built of cement and old growth lumber. You cannot even drive a nail into the lumber upstairs in those buildings because it is so rock solid. The cost of the design and engineering is now estimated 1.4 million, design and engineering. And they're only saying 11 million to build it. I don't quite see it. I think it'd probably be about double by the time it's all done. And then a wise man told me that was very successful in real estate. You add two, you don't take away. You have something good, you utilize it. You figure out how to make it work, not how to tear it apart just to demolish it. I mean, what are you going to have, a couple more parking spots that way? That if the tenants were able to move to a new building first, the old building would be much easier to upgrade. You'd have an empty space. You could wipe out all the utilities and facilities that are inside that, but keep the outside. And now you, instead of having an empty parking lot space, you now have another building that can be used for more income for the harbor. And as far as location of the building, I don't know why it is said that it has to be where the old building was. What about, and maybe I've missed something. I've been watching for it. It seems like it would make a lot more sense having even the permanent parking lot. You have a gorgeous view from over there, and that seems like a very vital part of the new building design is to have ocean access. You have view of Surfers Beach over there. You have the view of where the kayaks and the boats and the commercial areas at. And the other spot would be behind the existing tenant space. So again, that way you're not tearing down, temporarily putting stuff, having more cost, trying to locate it. Now, maybe it was evaluated. Again, I didn't see it. If there is an evaluation that says why it can't be in one of those locations, please let us know. I guess at that point, that's about it. Thank you for your time. Thanks for your attention. Thanks for listening to Ramon.
Thank you for your comment. We do normally limit comments to two minutes, but since you're not able to stay, I think we made an exception there. Next up, we have Ed Lorinas. Would you like to make a comment?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for giving me a chance to talk to you. It's really good to see you all. My head spins when I come here because there are so many things I want to talk about and I have limited time. And so I'm very grateful for you to get things started. I agree with everything you said. Thank you so much. And I'm going to repeat some of the things she said because it's really important. Having meetings at 10:00 a.m. on a Wednesday is nothing short of... Saying is one of them. You're not listening to the public. I'm not going to make assertions about your intentions, but the public thinks that you're trying to hide things, that you don't care about having their opinions listened to. And I'd like to say another thing, very important for you all to hear. Not allowing the public to come here via Zoom makes it even look more crazy. And to assert that the public can send you an email and you will read it, and that's an equivalent, or equivalent to a person actually being here, looking you in the eye and talking to you, it's not the same thing. It doesn't have the same effect, and it's very difficult for people to believe that you actually care. But here's my message to you. If you actually care about your public, the people that voted for you, the people that pay half of your budget at least, change your meetings to the evening and listen to them. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other public, members of the public who might make a general comment at this time? Okay. We will move along to Commissioner comments. Would I start it off? George, anything to say? Any comments today?
I don't have anything to say. No, not at this time. I just, well, I think I will say one thing. I'm happy to see that 9th of December, the Harbor Lights thing is going to happen again. I think it's time for folks in the area and in the Bay Area, whoever come to that. I remember when the kids were little, we would come. It's a fantastic thing. So happy it's going to happen again that we get a chance to all kind of party and have some fun for the holidays. So.
I'll start with that and end with that. Maybe more comments later. Virginia?
Yeah, I'll second what George said. I think that's exciting. But are we going to also be in the parade, James, Jen, for the Night of Lights parade?
They haven't contacted us, but I haven't reached out to you. I'll reach out.
That'd be kind of fun. I do want to say that I went to the Cal LAFCO meeting on October 18th, which is the reason I couldn't be at the October meeting. And just a couple of, I mean, it was very, very informative and just a couple of takeaways. One was that.
Those are claims?
LAFCO is helpful and constructive rather than.
We do it different now. Consent, consent one or discussion one?
Whenever there's an.
Discussion one. Okay, I figured that.
Of course, you know, they want to make sure that any of the agencies that are written about understand that they're trying to be helpful and they're going to work on that continuously. And the other thing is, since I was there as a special district representative, I actually put in this pitch for, you know, collaboration between special districts and the cities and the county, just because we, so much of, there are pretty many special districts in general who are part of, you know, the LAFCO process or can be a part of the LAFCO process. And I think that sometimes special districts can be viewed in a negative light, and I just wanted them to know, because this was actually the last session, that special districts have a role because we actually provide essential services. So I told LAFCO that when they move forward and working together, which they want to do in general collaboratively, that they need to know that special districts need to be included in some of these discussions. I made that pitch for special districts.
Thanks, Virginia.
Thanks.
Catherine?
Nothing.
Nothing to say? Okay. The only comment I'd like to say is I don't, if any of you haven't been to Oyster Point Marina recently, I'm pleased to announce that the construction is done. Kilroy has moved off. I mean, they're still working on their phase two or three across the road, but that's done. The Gabriel Wall that collapsed last winter has been redone. That was abutting the parking lot. The new, I'm not sure if it's called a recreation field or whatnot, that's going to be built on, that's on the mound of dirt that's left over. But Kilroy is going to have a ribbon cutting by South San Francisco Parking Recreation on Saturday, and so we're happy to see that complete. And I will be there if anybody else. And so that's also the time that they do their annual Thanksgiving Fun Run. So that's, that's, the Fun Run starts at 8:00 on Saturday. The ribbon cutting, so I plan to get there between 8:00 and 8:30.
Great.
Okay. We can move on to activity reports. What I'd like to do is just give each of the, our managers and directors a chance to run through their report, and then we will take public comments after that, and then Commissioner comments after that. So Jim, do you have anything to add to your report?
The only thing I want to, again, is the Lighted Boat Festival. We're looking forward to it. We're glad we're bringing it back this year, and we encourage everybody to attend and encourage the Commissioners also to attend and be, help us out with judging.
I will.
So we're looking forward to it, and hopefully everybody can attend that night. Nothing else to add unless you have questions.
Okay.
I have a question.
Well, let's wait, let's hold comments. I'm just going to run through all of the reports. Jim?
All right.
Or, I mean, John, anything to add to your report?
Everything's going quite well at both harbors. Polar Point Harbor been very busy last month because of recreational crab season. We're having a lot of success. Launch ramp, nice weekends where the launch ramp, trailer vessels, trailer vehicles were completely filled our lot, and we're at the park on Highway 1 all the way to Sam's. It's been extremely, extremely busy. The staff have been doing an excellent job at Polar Point, preparing all the boats for these strong winds that we've been having and continuing with all their maintenance work. Oyster Point Marina is still hovering around 80% occupancy, which is great. And everybody there again has been working hard to do improvements and repairs to the docks, keeping everything afloat. I'd like to mention extraordinary work that in response to an emergency situation, Assistant Harbor Master Jacob Walding led the team and was the communications officer while Deputy Harbor Masters Robertson and Goldsmith responded to an emergency call with people in the water around a burning vessel outside of our harbor. And when they got there, they were able to actually position their boat to where they could throw a lifering to the person that was hanging on to a anchor line at the front of the burning boat. And the person was saying that they couldn't swim, and they thought they were dying, and the visual was able to grab the line that our staff had, the safety line that our staff had tossed to him, and then they were able to pull him short distance away from the boat and get him out of the water. And he was treated for some minor burns, but was okay. And that was Jacob Walding, Assistant Harbor Master, and Deputy Harbor Masters Robertson and Goldsmith.
Good morning, Commissioner Zemke, all Commissioners, President Zemke. The only thing that I guess I would add to my report is that we're making really good progress on updating our policies. It's a little bit slow because there's, you know, a lot of review that goes into it and a lot of thought, but those policies should start coming to this Commission for review in the near future. Thank you.
Okay. At this point, I'll ask if there's any public comments here on any of the staff reports. Okay. Members of the Commission, comments on the staff report. George?
Just a quick question for Jim. For Harbor Nights, there'll be an expectation, I would think, of people coming to that for food, beverage, stuff like that. What do we anticipate to be open at that point in terms of our new vendor? And do we have provisions if that's not going to be open and available, that we would have food trucks or something else that would be, you know, because people are going to be looking, they're going to be walking, they're going to be looking at lights, they're going to want to, you know, have something to eat. We, are we thinking about any of that?
Yes, and right now the Pelagic is scheduled to be open.
Okay.
So we're looking into, of course, drinks for hot chocolate and coffee and tea separately, but Pelagic should be up and running, and then also Ocean Cider will be up and running. And I believe they will also have likely music at Ocean Cider that night. So in addition to our, it's going to be here also. So, yes, and then we also have several kid games and projects for the kids to come, so they get a takeaway for their Christmas tree or for whatever they want to use it for. So our lead person on this is Melanie, and she's doing a fantastic job with the support, Chris Tibby and his staff. So looking forward to being there and participating myself, and then it should be a good time for everybody who comes down.
Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Okay. We can move along then to the consent calendar. Are there any items that people would like to pull from? Or maybe let's do this first. Let's ask, are there any public comments on the consent calendar? Okay. Are there any Commissioner comments on the consent calendar?
I have one.
Yes.
I would like to have more explanation on item eight.
I would actually like to have that pulled.
Okay. We will pull item eight and add that. Would it be appropriate to add that after item number four on the discussion before we go to closed session? That's probably the best place to put it.
Well, that makes all the sense in the world.
Okay. All right, we will pull that one. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve items one through seven.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, a second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve items number one through seven on the consent calendar. Can we have a roll call, please?
President Zemke.
Aye.
And Mr. Donneret.
Yes.
Commissioner Jane Crowley.
Aye.
Commissioner Slater-Carter.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to discussion items, number one, consideration of resolutions approving purchase and sale agreements. Jim, I believe this one's yours.
Melanie's going to put a figure for us so we can look at it as we discuss it, helping our discussions.
Are you about this?
Oh, wait, you guys can see us, but you can't see the screen very well, right? Can we move the chairs over so they can actually, so our audience can read? You're okay? Okay. It's going to be.
Somebody's not having a problem finding. Oh, there it is. There we go.
Move it up a little bit if you can.
Okay.
President Zemke, Board, as you're aware, we've been working with the sellers of several pieces of property located above the Pillar Point Harbor Boat Launch that currently has a residence on it, right next to C Lot, at the top of C Lot, and then has four empty lots next to that, all the way down to Sam's Charter House property. And then across the street, two pieces of property that are also part of the entire package. There is a centerpiece of property that we may look at purchasing in the future once plans are developed, but right now that is a completely different owner, and we haven't engaged with that yet at this time. The properties, again, are, will make it continuous for the Harbor District to have land all the way from the top of C1 down to Sam's Charter House, which right now is mainly a grass field with one residence on the north end. On the south end, the lot closest to Sam's Charter House, that used to be access to the water or some kind of boat launch way back in the day, but it has been cut off with the coastal trail and no longer extends all the way to the ocean with the ramp. But the ramp is, that piece of property has been, earth has been moved on it and create that area, and it's still there. That slope is still there. There's, the main reason we're looking at purchasing this property is to extend parking to the boat launch and get it closer to the boat launch, and also increase the number of spaces so that we can get trucks and trailers off of Highway 1 when it's a significant fishing day, which happens several days a year. Just this last, November 4th, we had crab opener for recreational. We had boats and trailers parked on both sides of Highway 1 down to Sam's Charter House, really choking down Highway 1 and making it unsafe for people walking in that area and even for the drivers going in between the trucks and trailers. It's more dangerous than those cars on the highway around Sam's, which are mainly smaller passenger cars, not trucks and trailers. So that's the plan. We've been negotiating with the owners of the land. There's two different, there's four different owners. There's three separate trusts that own parcels, and then there's one parcel closest to Sam that is owned by an individual, our family. We've all, with guidance from the Board, we have negotiated a price for all of the properties and attached our resolutions approving the purchase of these properties in accordance with the purchase-sale agreements that you've been provided. The total price for all those properties, I wrote them down. That's for all four purchases of the piece of the property. And with that, the recommended motion for this item is the adoptions of Resolution Number 2314, Resolution 2315, Resolution 2316, and Resolution 2317, all attached to the staff report. And those resolutions have to be individually approved as there is four different entities in which we are buying the property from. Boring any other questions? That's my report on the property purchase.
Good. Okay, I'll open it up to a public comment. Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this?
Lorinas would like to speak?
First, I'd like to say, remember that you can take a question that I ask and ask it yourself and discuss it amongst yourselves without violating the Brown Act. Can you correct me if I'm wrong on that? So I have a lot of questions on this, but first I'd like to give credit to that last slide, to Lisa Ketchum, who's a planning commissioner and is in the room. She did a nice job of putting that together because, and you did it without anybody asking because I looked at your agenda item and I couldn't decipher without going to the planning offices and trying to figure out either online and such what those parcels were. So I don't know if that was her slide or not, but it's very similar, and I appreciate you putting it up.
It was similar to the one we were going to use, but it was clear as a package.
Okay, thank you. Questions I have is, where's the district getting the money to do this? Not clear to me. It's difficult to find it in the budget. Maybe you guys can point that out to the public, and I think the public has these questions too. Is parking the only thing you plan on doing with this? How is this consistent with the district's mission statement? And just as a resident, I live in Moss Beach. I've been in the community for a long time. I have a sailboat in the harbor. I've been, I've had sailboats in this harbor for a long time, and the other day I was working on my boat. I sat on the dock, which is C Dock, and I ended up with splinters on my butt, walking from the parking lot to Dock C. The thing looks like a double helix. It's twisting. When I clean the bottom of my boat, there's little pieces of styrofoam all along the waterline. Those come from the docks falling apart. I have a Surf Rider t-shirt. We talk about picking up plastic, and here I am at a dock facility that's falling apart, yet you all are spending $8 million on property and you're not replacing the dock. So I would like to see someone ask the question, how all this comes together? And not to mention, you all are doing at Oyster Point, another expense. So one of you, please answer this to the public so we know what you're up to. Thanks.
Thank you, Ed. Other members of the public? Yes. Just state your name for the record, please.
Thank you. I'm Lisa Ketchum, San Mateo County Planning Commissioner, former MidCoast Council member, and have been following the district for a long time and with intense interest. And so, in fact, there's a page on the MCC website that I had made when I was on that council with history and stuff because, you know, all very important to us here in the midcoast. I just wanted to echo early, earlier what was said under public comment about the time of the meeting and now the fact that you can't, public can't comment on via Zoom to, you know, think of the people who can't attend. I'm lucky I'm retired, you know, and I can come over here this morning. So I would just encourage you to look at that again. And as Ed said, I did do that parcel map. I'm familiar with all the time, going to County GIS website, looking at what parcels proposed that might be coming to the Planning Commission and all this. And so first I saw it on your consent, on your closed session last June, was it? And I thought, and I looked those up, and I thought, wow, this is exciting. And, you know, following along now, here we are. And I thought, but the public, looking at your agenda, wouldn't know, and they wouldn't know how to look up this, the parcel map. And so I did put the red lines on there, and I did, and I thought, well, this isn't my place to publicize this, you know, I'm not on your board. And so I, but I did send it to the MidCoast Council members so they were aware, and a few others who I, to make sure they understood what was being spoken about. And this ties in, like I say, with just keeping the public informed because particularly here in the midcoast, this is of such importance to us. Over the years, the Harbor District has owned. Over the years, the Harbor District has owned local parcels here, sold them, bought them back, different things going on, and even that you used to own part of the Burnham Strip and sold that, now buying back another part. I really can understand the desire to purchase, if you had the money, the contiguous parcels between you and the highway, that you can access the harbor on foot right from there, really great. Lots of ideas for that. I don't understand the two parcels across the highway, what that really has to do with your mission, and I think I'll just leave it at that. Thanks very much.
Very comments. Okay, I'll open it to Commissioner comments.
Also, first of all, I don't think this board is gonna make the same stupid mistakes that past boards made with real estate. There is my opinion, only my opinion, it doesn't reflect the members of the public nor the board, but as somebody who has watched what happened with that over the years, I have been stunned at the lack of foresight. And I am one of the supporters of this. We did have a finance committee meeting on where we are going to get the money to pay for this. Which is in the agenda, and in fact, recent past boards and this board have gotten our district into better shape financially. The reason we are doing it now is because real estate is a time-based opportunity, and when it's gone, it's gone. Our mission is about emergency response, and it's about public access. We don't have adequate current Harbor District lands and facilities to meet either of those needs. I admit, public access is one of those odd things, like on a freeway where you've got a 10-lane freeway like up through Auburn, and it's packed bumper to bumper for about three hours every day, and the rest of the time, it's vacant. But that's how, public access is a very timely need, and the folks from Foster City and Burlingame and Redwood City who want to come over here on a nice day need to have access, and that's parking. And I think public access is one of the parts of our mission statement that has been under acknowledged, because as you said, people over there, a portion of their property taxes comes over here, and this is a public access point. So it's very important that we take advantage of this while we can. And emergency access, the county is not maintaining the airport in necessarily a way for emergency access either, and if we have a major earthquake, or tsunami, or we have need to park fire district emergency vehicles, we need a place by the highway, and that's up. As far as future use, I, the current needs is for parking. I would like to see this stay as public access and not get built on. I can't promise that, I can't promise what future boards will do. It might somehow turn into a source of income, depending on the needs of the community and the district, but if we don't get it now, we won't have it, and we're going to get more and more and more close to it. Lisa, you were from Dixon, Ed, you're a very aware person, you know how in the Central Valley, acreages got sold off for housing, and all of a sudden, the intended use for agriculture was no longer possible because the residents were upset of these new subdivisions. I also look at this as a way of protecting the mission and the status of the Harbor District and the harbor. I wish they hadn't done what they'd done in the past, and I'm not gonna be here when the renewal of that RV parking, of that RV lot lease comes up, because it's another 25 years off, but I hope to God that the district is smart enough to make use of that for district purposes, instead of giving the income away. And to be real honest, one of the things I'm very concerned about, and you guys both know it, is the ability of people of limited means to be able to come and enjoy the coast. This RV park that's gonna be over here is not going to be necessarily affordable, and I don't see other agencies, other than the Harbor District, having either the means or the mission to have the ocean and the harbor accessible to people of all ages and income levels. And so I strongly support this and hope we can get the other two parcels, if we can get them at a reasonable price, we don't give money away, so that we can have spots for people to maybe bring their RVs, and for crab season, because it used to be, people could bring their RVs, have crabs, do their crabbing, or their salmon fishing, or whatever it was they were doing, and be able to afford to come here. I was just at a yacht club event, and I was shocked at how many members of the Harbor Yacht Club, the Hefner Bay Yacht Club, are from out of town. And when I joined it 10 years ago, it was all mostly locals. Now it's people from Sacramento who have joined our yacht club. And the yacht club has to have facilities for them, but what that is, as an indicator to me, is the popularity and the necessity of the Harvard for a broader scope of people to use than ever has been in the past. So we may have to put aside painting things, and, but real estate is available now, and it won't be if we put this off, and I can guarantee it will only become more expensive. We're all aware of what's going on, even in California with our problems. So I support this, I think it falls fully within the four squares of our mission statement, and I wish district, I told Jim, I told everybody, I wish this Harbor District had been buying oceanfront lots, or bayfront lots, when they were $25,000. They're not anymore, and they're built on. So this is, there's not, and there's not much left. And so I'm looking forward to working with the public and having meetings to discuss this as it goes forward, but again, I don't, and in terms of parking, we're gonna be discussing how that's gonna be developed in the future. I have my own ideas, which don't involve large swaths of asphalt, because there are many now hydrology-friendly parking lot surfaces, there's porous concretes, there's block and grass, there's all kinds of things, and I think the district should be looking at those, not broad swaths of impermeable asphalt, which just spreads pollution and creates And if you have any questions, my number, you know, I'm available, I call back, I'm somewhat in, and I'm not begging forgiveness, but I have a personal situation right now, and so I may be a little bit slow, but I do get back to people.
Thank you, Catherine. Other comments for the question? Yeah, Judge.
Just an aside, it also allows us to conceive of concepts that enhance coastline shoreline resiliency. By owning more and more of the property around the harbor, it will give us options for resiliency in the future, or at least to consider those kinds of options, rather than having it sold privately and then built upon, and we use that. So that's just another thing that we, as a board and future boards, can then have as an option of thinking about additional shoreline resiliency. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Virginia.
I support everything that has been said, and I just think that the properties that are adjacent to each other are, I mean, such a rare opportunity to get that type of, have that opportunity, and I think it'd be a wasted opportunity if we didn't move forward. So I actually commend the staff for actually having a good relationship with the owners, so they would be willing to sell, because they weren't willing to sell at some point, and for putting the staff report together and looking at the finances to make sure that it works, and thanking to the finance committee, which is made up of Catherine and Tom, to make sure that this was financially feasible. So I'll make a motion to approve the purchase and sales agreements for the acquisition of properties located at APN 047252220, Cabrio Highway, APN 047252230, Cabrio Highway, APN 047252240, Cabrio Highway, APN 047252360, Cabrio Highway, APN 04725239011820, Cabrio Highway, APN 047251040, Avenue Alhambra, and APN 047251140, Avenue Alhambra, and that's my motion.
And I believe we need to make these individually, each...
You can approve all the resolutions by one. There's four separate resolutions, but you can approve them with one motion.
With one motion?
If I might ask that we add in the final line, which is, and finding such actions exempt from California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA.
Yeah, sorry, I missed that.
And can I add just one budgetary addition to that, is to approve the increase in capital expenditures to be funded by available working capital?
Let's make that a separate one.
Okay.
I'll second this.
Okay, any further discussion?
I would like to say, just for the public, if you drive down from the lands we're talking about, at the north end by the light, on the ocean side, on the other side of Sam's, you will see an example of what was put in by another, allowed by another jurisdiction, which could have been more carefully thought out for the environment of the harbor. And so that said, that was also one of my concerns, is, as you said, that the harbor environment and...
Resilience.
Resilience is paid attention to. So, roll call vote?
Okay. Thank you. I just want to add too, that I do agree with all the comments that were expressed here as well. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Domrot?
Hi.
Mr. Chang Crowley?
Hi.
Mr. Slater Carter?
Yes.
President Zemke?
Aye. Okay, we'll move along to item number F2.
Wait a minute, we have one...
Oh, let's, let's...
We have one more motion.
On the financial piece, right.
Well, I guess we can make it under this one. It probably makes the most sense. Would you like to suggest a motion for the funding of this?
The question I have, though, is that motion wasn't on the agenda, and so I'm wondering if we don't want to, it's not an emergency item, so if we shouldn't wait until the next meeting?
Yeah, but shouldn't that budget reflect that anyway? Is there a motion that's even necessary?
But couldn't we wind it into the next item, the financial committee update? It's related to the...
But it's not a motion under this update, it's not an action. You're asking for an action item on an update.
So the agenda just needs to include a general description to inform the public about what's being considered, and discussion item one is pretty broad. It's talking about considering resolutions approving the purchase and sales agreement. So arguably, it's, you know, covered by that, and you can include it, so I don't see a real concern with it.
We can't, we can't make the purchase without approving the money anyway, so I mean, it kind of fits.
I mean, to me, it's almost just, you would assume that that would be reflected in the budget. Why does there even need to be a motion?
That's a procedural thing that we do, is part of the policy of, anytime we approve a contract, for example, for a capital project, we include language there to be funded by available working capital, and to increase the capital expenditures, and then that equals signal to our accounting staff to do a budgetary entry to make those funds available.
I'd like to have it as an agenda item on another agenda, just because it's not specific in here, and I'm kind of a...
I don't know, I would, we already approved this. I would go with Julie's recommendation to make the motion to move this into the budget that will allow us to buy the properties, so that we can move forward with the transaction.
What's, do we know what the schedule is for this transaction? What's the escrow date, or?
After our next board meeting.
Let's just wait until our next board meeting. We can have a full discussion and...
We have a, when the PSAs are signed, we have good faith money that has to go into escrow, but the bulk of the purchase will become, we're looking at, I think, the 17th or 18th of December, which is the week after our board meeting.
I thought the next board meeting was on the 20th, or is it?
We would need that budgetary authority to put the deposits in.
As someone who has spent many years going through old agendas, looking for how boards got to where they were, when I was looking at the agendas from the, from past history, I prefer that things are separated out and put on, so that it's in the public record.
And approve the resolutions today, which will allow us to move forward, and then call a special meeting the week of the 11th, to enable us to close on the 18th and 19th.
Let's do that.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, hold on, we need to add one. So Jim, this means that you're gonna notify the seller that you approved this?
Yes, we'll execute the PSAs. The only thing now is the...
Dollar an hour money. Yeah.
The down payments, and I have to say is to get that.
Okay, perfect.
Of all...
Thank you.
Then we can move along to item number two, Finance Committee Update.
Lisa.
Catherine.
Let me just say, thank you, Lisa, for coming. Yes, we held the Finance Committee meeting on November 1, and it was, we went through all kinds of details, but, and again, I will give praise to past Harbor District boards, some of, because, and to the staff, because the district is in a position where we can buy these lands, and it, so we went, we went through it, we look at the five-year CIP, we do have stuff we can move around if we end up needing to, but at this point, it appears that we're pretty much on solid ground, and need to take... it appears that we're, we're pretty much on solid ground, and need to take advantage of, of what this opportunity that has come to us. So, we're looking at the retail center and the committee as well, and we had, that, that was an important part of our discussion on whether we could afford this. The retail center is a mixed bag of opportunities and burdens. Now, we're working on planning for the future with that, as well as trying to keep the costs down. But the financial health of the district is good. You can see it in our audits, you can see it in our financial statements, and so we, I am, I am comfortable that we should be buying this land now, and that the district will be going on, on a solid financial footing in the future. I do not want to see the district. I personally do not, but more importantly than my small desires, is we have a staff that is managing the finances of the district very, very well, and making important, important amendments, so that we are not spending money wildly. And, and just a quick note to your comment about How City. Prices have gone up so high, that I don't think a lot of those projects that were planned are going to be able to be put forward in the way they were planned. And it's going to be a board discussion about what happens, and it depends on our agreements as well, and timelines. But at this point in time, our, our budget and our five-year capital improvement program are strong, and we're moving forward. And just as, as another side note, I'm very pleased with what we're doing with being, oh, we're on the harbor, we're on the Coastal Commission agenda tomorrow. Yeah. To get work done, and so with, with staff and consultants' help, we can keep costs in line for getting all of this stuff that's been postponed for decades done. We are keeping an eye on the, on the Finance Committee, and, and again, it's, it's staff who is, is keeping this whole project moving forward.
Virginia.
So, Catherine and, and Tom, who's not here, thanks for doing all of it, and the staff, too. And I just want to reiterate that the Ad-Hoc Committee has taken into consideration the financial pieces, that's why I'm confident that Finance Committee's been given some good information to move forward, so thanks for all that work.
Okay. Question I had, the Finance Committee report, I do, I do appreciate the report, and I did watch the, the recording of the Finance Committee, the Subcommittee.
Which is available for everyone.
Right, which
The Finance, the Standing Committee.
I'm sorry. The Finance, the Finance Committee. But one of the things that I found useful in that was the table that was presented, which was kind of difficult to read on the, the video. And I'm wondering, is there a way that we can make that available to the public? It's not in the, the report, the, the published Finance Committee report itself.
Can we put that?
I thought it was
There's a link to it, it's just not
Maybe it's
I think if you click on the heading above the video, that you'll come to the actual agenda and the links to that.
Okay, because all I, all I remember looking at was the video, which, which was helpful, but I think it would be useful to have the access to the report as well, so.
We can probably put the agenda more apparent, because you did need to know that you had to click on that heading in order to get to the agenda portion of it.
That would be good.
George.
So, you know, when we talk about finances in the Finance Committee, there's a direct correlation to all the different things we do. It's an obvious one. The one in my mind is the direct connection for the, the purchase of the land, and are we increasing deferred maintenance because of that? So, when we look at the finances, you know, I mean, we, we could defer some maintenance, we would probably have to have a, a list of high risk and low risk for deferred maintenance, but had we evaluated, are we adding to a deferred maintenance list? I guess, you know, the members of the public indicated, you know, conditions of some of the docks and stuff like that. And if we're not going to be doing that, we defer that maintenance, we need to explain that to the public, you know, that it's kind of low risk right now, we'll pick it up, you know, at a later date. But I'm just wondering, are we increasing the deferred maintenance of, of the harbor to do this?
You want to answer that? We didn't get into the specifics of sanding the docks, I have to
Well, not that, but any, I mean, deferred maintenance is all maintenance of the harbor, so
Exactly.
A couple of a small piece, maybe the other things that, that we need to maintain, that we may not have to maintain right away, and we can defer it, and there may be some things we can't. So, is it impacting the purchase of this land? Is it going to impact your deferred maintenance or your maintenance program?
No. Always have monies to continue to do all the maintenance work that we need to do to the dock. And whatever monies we need to, to do the repairs. As members of the public stated, though, that the docks are old, and can only do so much in repairing them, so they do eventually need to be replaced.
Which is not deferred maintenance.
Your schedule for the replacement in our general plan?
We've got a design engineering team, working to, to get all the permitting in place, in addition to all of the expansion and the replacement of the commercial docks. And that, that, actually, the Coastal Commission is, is considering that permit today.
Well, that's today.
And then we'll also have some additional permitting, but that entire project is estimated at present to be somewhere around $37 million. So, unless there's direction otherwise, we're going to have to continue to seek funding, unless we, like I say, if there's direction otherwise, will we determine that we're going to not do at all this one large project, but to do it that way. It's better to general managers using ask connections, et cetera, to, to try to seek funding, to get us some
I just realized that we did not provide an opportunity for public comment here. If there's any member of the public that would like I could see it there. Ed, would you like to make a comment?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say that while I'm, my comments might be, I wouldn't say negative, but a little assertive, let's say. It's only because I care about what the district does, and I believe all of you have the best interest of the district at heart, and the public. But now I'm a member of the public, so I'd like to tell you a little bit about what the public thinks. With this Finance Committee report, I too, and thank you, Commissioner Zimki, for pointing this out, I too tried to, I clicked on the link and found that what I got was a video. So, I either had to watch the whole video and then pause it and try to find the information, so I didn't have the patience for that, so I went to the, to the finance report that I could find, and it was like archival research. And so, just as a member of the public, trying to understand what you all are doing, and the decisions you're making, and why you're making them, and how it relates to what we as members of the public care about, it would be great if you could summarize some of these things. And you started off really well in this Finance Committee report. You had a list, budget document, projections of available funding, market analysis for Pillar Point Retail Center. I was thinking, hurrah, as I read this, I'm going to have a summary of this, and I'll be able to understand what you all are up to. I was shocked to find that we'd had a video. If you could have followed up and just said, here's, here's a discussion on the budget, just the highlight, this is how we're going to get the funding, this is what we're doing, not the whole thing, it would help me and the public understand what you're doing. And just another comment, with respect to fixing docks and things like that, the discussion you all were having is, and John, thank you again for being so clear in your description of this, fixing docks is not the same as, as building new docks, and that's much more expensive. But I can tell you this, the guys that operate down there work really hard to keep those docks literally afloat. That's not, I mean, John, that was exactly the right wording. They, you know, they work hard to keep the docks afloat, and one of the things the public should know is that the guys go to Oyster Point, where you all are building new docks, I believe that I haven't been down there, and pilfer stuff from there to fix things over here. So, we get used, electrical posts, whatever, to keep our docks here at Pillar Point running at the, but just as an example of how hard your guys work, just to keep things floating. And so, there's no question they need to be redone, and it's an expensive, it's a huge expense. So, how does that fit into the picture that you're drawing? And just one last thing, and I'll go. I didn't disagree with the idea of buying this property, I just wanted to know what your plans are, and how in the world of budgets you're going to afford it. So, thank you.
I will just add that the docks and the need to move usable and recycle portions from Oyster Point to is based on past board decisions, and we're, we are trying to work through that history. It can't be done immediately, and, and to be honest, it makes, again, it, it makes me even more complimentary of our staff, who can recycle things, when they know full well that through the permitting process and all of the other shackles and weights that are put on staff and the board, to be able to put in new materials, new, new, you're keeping ours going. With recycle, which I like, that's sort of, recycle is, reuse is better than throwing it away. And so, you'll be seeing us, now that we're through, now that we will be through coastal, since the coastal recommendation, albeit with a whole lot of conditions, is to approve Johnson Pierren these new docks. We can get, we can get going on this. So, that's, that's, again, my, my first consideration, my first questions, Ed, when I got on the board, were about the cost of this new retail center. And then this land came up, and it's about keeping the Harbor District out of the financial swamp. So many good ideas, but we always have to be able to afford them first. Thank you. But we don't need to, oh, it
There's just information only.
It's just information only, I'm sorry, I'm looking at page three, which is approved, so we don't need to approve anything.
Any other further comments on the Finance Committee update? Okay. We'll move along to item number three, Pillar Point Harbor Retail Center Replacement Project Update, change order number three consideration. John?
This is, it'll be a motion to approve the change order request, number three, for an amount of $784,869, additional design engineering monies for consultant Goring and Strajic, for the Pillar Point Harbor Retail Center Replacement Project. The board got an update on that design project last month, and made a recommendation to postpone on a, postpone a decision until after the Finance Committee was able to review our and be able to report back to the board, and make a recommendation on whether or not to approve increased monies for the design engineering of the new retail center. That, happy to answer any questions, and we've also got the design engineering consultant on, does he have to answer any questions, may I have for him?
Okay, thank you, John. I will ask, is there any public comments at this time on this? Okay. Move along to commissioner comments.
From the committee, we're taking a long-term view of this project, and
Which committee?
From the Design Committee.
Our committee.
Our committee, yeah. And trying to figure out what we are going to need to meet the needs of the public in an affordable manner. And unfortunately, it has resulted in some concerns that, well, fortunately, some concerns were raised, which we are trying to deal with, and it has also, it seems to have, it has increased the proposed size of the project. And so, my logic, personally speaking, is I would like to be able to get this approved with the larger size, and then we can build it in stages as necessary, but my experience has been that you need a good comprehensive overall plan to begin with. And so, I think this is a lot of money, and
That's my heartache.
I will say, one of the things that the Design Committee members have been fighting, or arguing for, fighting is the wrong word, but pushing, pressing, and insisting on, is that the new $2 million bathrooms be preserved.
The ADA bathrooms.
The ADA bathrooms need to be sort of incorporated into the design, not just redesigned and replaced. That's maybe a past pattern and practice of this district. It is not going to be the pattern and practice while I'm sitting here. If we've got it and we've built it, good designers can figure out how to, how to design around stuff. One of the problems with it is the elevation of it. We'll figure that out. So, I think that my recommendation is that we approve this change order and get things nailed down in terms of the design elements, so we can do some more serious, other serious planning on how to move forward, because the unfortunately, the opinion of those who are in the building field are that we can't reuse the old building. It has serious It has serious elevation and wear and decay problems. And having, having personally done a fair amount in, more than average, but certainly not at a professional level of working on houses. I can tell you that when you, like, I can say, I have a house in Montero that was built in about 1955. And we bought it and we thought, oh, wow, this is really great. We can just use it. And then it turned out after we bought it, that it was cut into the hillside and it had major water flow problems around it. And we had to dig out the entire subterranean structure and put in drainage and French drains. Something that people had just been painting over the wet spots on the walls for years. And then we got working on it and we noticed that the concrete block in the 50s had been put in. It hadn't been painted and so it had rusted and rebar, and, and the rebar was fractured in the concrete block. Rebar will, when it rusts, John or Jim, expands seven to 10 times what its original diameter is when it rusts. And so it blows out concrete. So what we thought was a fine, stable-looking structure, we've had to do all kinds of work on to support it and redo concrete and rebar and all of that kind of stuff. Those, I, I bring that up in that kind of detail because those are the kinds of problems that we can run into on these older buildings that look perfectly sound and solid. And so that's, we have to, we have to be looking at avoiding those kinds of costs while we're looking at putting this. So I suggest that we change order and I can guarantee that the committee is, and Jim and John are going to be managing this closely.
Other comments?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So during the ad hoc committee meetings that Catherine and I are a part of, these meetings, I have to be very honest that I was, and I think Catherine was pretty shocked that the cost would be this much. Like, like, I, I don't even understand how it got to be that much. It was kind of a surprise. But, you know, I understand the scope of work that has to be done. I just want to know if we're going to be surprised anymore. I mean, it sounds like this is more kind of like a final tab for just the planning stage. And I'm assuming that this is going to include the planning, the San Mateo County Planning Workshop that we have to go through. I mean, this description of additional scope of work, can I just find out? I mean, it sounds like it's all of this, if you look at the base and additional fee summary. Are we going to have any other unexpected expenses on this? Because this is almost double what we were told to begin with. And I get that it's a 225, it's 225% more and we have to go through this as a new development. But I don't understand why we were so, it was, the estimate was so under the range that we are now at.
Is that a question for me?
Anyone who can answer it, because I can't.
Please, go ahead.
Okay. Hearing, anyway, the, the simple answer is that the project got more than twice the size that it started out as. And the process has become a bit more evolved, a bit more involved. And we don't anticipate any further changes unless the project continues to get larger, which wouldn't, which ultimately is to the district's benefit in terms of income. There is one caveat in the proposal, which is the amount of public hearings and back and forth during the coastal commission process is unknown. I believe what we have in the scope of work there is to prepare all the required materials, attend all the required hearings. But if it snowballs after that unexpectedly and without our ability to predict it, at that point, we have to raise our hand and say, you know, we're on our third hearing. We didn't anticipate that. That was, you know, unknowable. What I can counter that with is by saying, one of the things about choosing the site is our preliminary conversations with both San Mateo County and the coastal commission have been generally favorable in addressing one of the questions that came up earlier by one of the speakers. One of the reasons we're on this site is because the others were clearly made to be or described to us as being non-starters with the coastal commission. So we're choosing the safest route in that respect.
How many meetings do we?
By the way, while I'm getting news, I should also say, the engineer's cost estimate is our architect's cost estimate. And as we proceed forward, one of the very first things we recommend doing is engaging our cost estimator, whose fee is in there, so isn't an extra cost, and saying, give us the cost estimator's breakdown of this thing so we can really see specifically where the costs are. And there, and then while we finish schematic design, if some of those costs seem to be insane, we can wrestle them down before we get any further.
Just a question I have, conceptually, this work that we're proposing to do here would bring us all the way through all of the permitting, the conceptual designs, so that we would have a package that we could put on the shelf and then five, 10 years from now, I'm assuming the next step would be to translate that into construction drawings at some future.
The package you're approving now actually includes our fees through the end of construction, assuming a relatively linear process. If the project goes to sleep for four years or so, we would stop wherever the project went to sleep. And I can't speak to what happens with fees or scope five years down the line. But the entire package you're looking at is finish schematic design, get entitlements, do the working drawings, manage construction, do a punch list. It's soup to nuts.
Well, you know, one concern I have is that, you know, I, I, I don't see us really putting a shovel in the ground on this project for five years at least to meet Polagix's needs of establishing a business there. And is there any risk that things might change in those five years? You know, as far as what, what, what the county might want or what the coastal commission might want? Or that, is there a risk here that that throws us back a bit? So I mean, how, how, how safe are we saying we've got all this, this project approval and then it sits on the shelf for five years and somebody says, oh, no, what about this? We'd like to have this. How, I'm, I'm trying to wrestle with that risk, I guess, is what is wrestling in my mind.
You are, have more of a history with the district than I do. But I think hidden in your question is, yeah, there's risk. Things can change. By the way, getting the approval with coastal commission and county will take probably between a year to two years and probably closer to two years. So by the time, you know, then you're, and that approval is good for, I believe, two years before you start construction. So you have a kind of fortunendo. And after that, things get a little rusty, a little, little iffy.
I would also add that Mission Creek, Project Creek is one of the major hazards of a public agency. It depends on the strength of the board to be able to say, no, we've planned this out well and we're going to get it to the point where it needs to be before we consider any Mission Creek. But I was just reading about a dam project that was started two years ago that has tripled in cost. Not because of the board and not because of the staff, but because of financial issues that are out of control of the boards and the staff. We've all looked at what has happened to the price of gas in the last two years. Just, I was just reading a note that I got that PG&E was looking to do a 25% increase in electrical costs. And somehow it may have been cut back to 13%. So if your bill's $400 a month, you're looking at just under $450 a month. That's a big chunk for a lot of people. So these things are going to happen and it's up to us, the board and the staff to do what we can to keep this within the bounds of place. But Mission Creek is definitely, so many good ideas, so little money.
Can I just, a moment, address Commissioner Crowley's question directly about how the project got so much larger? I think you might remember two or three several months ago when we first presented the original schematic design, which was much more modest. A resident and attorney, who I think was a gentleman, whose name I don't remember, but he was instrumental in getting the devil's slide tunnel built, suggested we look at it.
That would be Mark Morsara.
Yeah. He suggested we look at a hybrid scheme. The scheme we had on the table rebuilt the existing building in place, which would have made it impossible to keep existing tenants and really only added a two or 3,000 square feet to the building size. And his sort of hybrid suggestion was in hindsight incredibly useful and productive, I think. We have a scheme where you can choose, as you go through finances, whether the project is feasible. But also the building got larger. And if, when we, we did some snooping around in the central, Central Coast Commission, I've forgotten what the group is. They have a great, they have a historical section on your district. And they have photos of, as I'm sure you do, when that building was first built, there was only parking in the lower area. The other stuff didn't even exist. So the amount of use and capacity and traffic that comes to your site now has far more than doubled. And I think it's just completely rational and logical in keeping with how much you've grown that that facility grows to support you.
I, I understand that, Jim. I just didn't think that, you know, all of the work would be doubling in price. I mean, I expected it to be high, but not going from six figures to seven figures. So that, that's, I mean, and actually, the hybrid model is something that I think made a lot of sense. And that's why the committee, you know, was supportive of it. But I, I just, I don't know, it just seems like the, the cost, I mean, I get it, I get it. And, you know, I just want to get this moving. I just also think that, you know, Mission Creek, as you said, Catherine, could increase the cost more. So we have to be very focused moving forward. Which means that our public meetings will have to be very focused as well.
First, you want to chime in?
Yes, I guess a question for the ad hoc committee, the finance committee. Last time we talked about this, we wanted to get a sense of if you build it, they will come. In other words, we're going to be building something twice as big. Will we get, you know, the, the finance, I mean, yeah, yeah, of, of people coming to that? Does it make a good business sense? That's, that's, you know, I'm, I'm assuming you guys evaluated that and saying, yeah, if we build it twice as big, you know, we'll get, you know, twice as many people coming. So I, I want to get a more sense of, you know, how you guys discuss that and are you feeling more comfortable about that?
In, in commercial real estate, parking is always one of the key factors in whether people can or will come, particularly when they need to drive.
And we've seen that increase.
And, and we've, and as, we've seen that increase. We've seen the lines out the door on a nice day when Catch Joanne was open and people were, and, and they were, and they were doing a whole lot more to-go food at that point in time. But another part of it, and, and I'm lobbying for the district to strongly consider how to make sure we get adequate publicity to draw people here. Even the, even the little farmer's market in, that happens monthly in Princeton now, is advertising on Nextdoor. Advertising and giving people a sense of what's going on is very important to getting people to come. There's a lot of competitive venues anymore. It's one of the reasons I asked for the contract with Polagix to allow us to include food trucks. So that we can have more different draws for people of different economic levels and resource levels. But I believe that the business here is, is it's known around the world. People know about Half Moon Bay, they know about this harbor, they want to come here. But we have to have the ability for them to come and make use of it. One of the things I liked that we were discussing in this hybrid model is how to have more outside seating, for instance, for people. So they could get food to go and go and take it and have a nice pleasant place to sit, not necessarily inside or, or on the sidewalk. I think the demand is there. If you go through shopping malls, even with, with the internet and so on, they are for the most part fully occupied. It's the office spaces that are not being utilized and that are surplus at this point. I can't, I can't speak to the future, I can only speak to my, my experience. But I believe that we will be able to have that business coming over. Not, not on Monday nights. And it's not going to be a 24/7 kind of, of business. But it, again, it goes back to making us our mission statement about public access and, and making things available for people. I have to admit, Ocean Cider, I thought it was a wild and crazy idea.
It would have been great.
And I am totally impressed with the business it's doing. So I think, I think we have lots of opportunity. I think if we wait 10 years to, to double the size of the building, we're going to be spending four times as much. That's, that then makes it tougher for, if you're going to do a, a cost-based rent structure, people need to be able to afford the rent too. So I think, I think it will be there. I think doing it now is important. And if, if we have surplus space that we, we maybe have to wait for a while, we should be talking to maybe the state or the environmental organizations and getting some information up for people so they understand what they're coming to and, and why we're, why this is such a special area. But if you drive around Princeton on the weekends, oh my God, there's just, there's just no parking spaces. People are wandering, they're on the trails, they're everywhere. So this will be.
I guess the only other question in my mind, it really came up when a member of the public asked that question. It's going to be really important to explain to them how this will all get phased. You know, in terms of the current residents, the, the leases, as you recall it, how is all that going to work? I, I remember earlier discussion with the hybrid kind of scheme. Hybrid meant like kind of more phased construction in a little bit of a different area so that they could stay where they are, continue their business till the next building is done and then somebody moves in there. And then I, I was under the impression we would be doing more moving that building back towards the road where that parking lot is in the back. And then parking would be, would be in front, additional parking, but the building would get moved backwards. So that.
Not the whole building.
Portion of it.
Portions of it. And we're going up and back.
So that would be the phase part, that we start building part of it in the back. So, and when that's done, some, you know, the leasing can move into there while other persons are going to go. But, but it's going to be really important to explain to them how that's going to work.
Oh, absolutely.
And minimize impact on them. And I don't know if they, they under, they really have seen that yet and how that may work.
Well, we haven't, we haven't been, we, we don't have the specifics for that just yet. And it also depends on the lease situations.
Yeah, we, we do have a strategy for it though, as shown on the screen here. as shown on the screen here. The, the little red circled spot would be phase one. And as you can see, it allows the building to stay in place. And, but it's a, it's more than just structure. It's finances ultimately. Is this going to cost less than giving the existing tenants temporary facilities onsite? We don't know.
Okay. Did we have any public comment? Ed, would you like to make your public comment?
Yes, please, thank you. A few quick things. If you want to expedite the plant permitting process, there's two things you can do. One is make sure that the public supports you. Can't underestimate public support. And I don't just mean the locals, but the, everyone that uses the harbor. Get their support and make the permitting process much better. And then secondly, it's very important for permitted, for the permitting agencies to see how you're doing relates to the strategic plan and that you actually fit all the pieces together, looking into the future. And I've looked for something like that in, in your publications and I haven't seen it, especially with respect to this particular project.
Any further comments from the commission? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. This is to be a motion to approve the change order number three for design engineering consultant Goring and Staja for the Pillar Point Harbor Retail Center replacement.
And, and we need to add that we're going to approve an increase in capital expenditure appropriations for this amount to be funded by available working capital.
Right, okay.
And that, that is a subtext to this particular agenda item.
That's included in the motion.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, a kind of a roll call, please.
Mr. Chain Crowley?
Hi.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
President Zemke?
Hi.
Commissioner Dahmer.
Hi.
Okay. Moving along to item number, discussion item number four, the 2020 strategic plan review and update. Jim?
Good afternoon again. In reviewing the strategic plan, since the strategic plan has been drafted, we also drafted a master plan. And then referring back to the strategic plan that was done in 2020, the plan should be looked at by the Harbor District just to make sure it's still current or if any updates need to be made to that plan. So my recommendation to the board is that we update the 2020 strategic plan to make sure we're staying on course. And if some items either fell off or we need to add, we can do that at that time to the strategic plan. And again, be more specific with the strategic plan too as a master plan has been adopted. To do that, need to solicit for a consultant to help us with updating the strategic plan. There are two very highly qualified consultants out there that can do this for us and have been involved with the district before, BHI Management Consulting and Roush Communications Consulting. Roush Communications helped us draft the actual 2020 strategic plan. And before that, BHI Management Consulting was involved. To do, to be able to go out and do this, I need permission from the board to use the simplified acquisition process, procurement process versus the formal, which allows me to go out and get bids from three companies and then use the best value in consideration which ones we would recommend to the board to approve. We have the board, the, the strategic plan 2020, it's going to be 2024 with a goal of finishing the update by 2025, which is right on time with the normal one to five, or four to five year reviews of strategic plans. Barring any questions, that is my recommendation and my request.
Okay. Virginia?
Yeah, I, so I think it's a great idea, Jim. And if you, if you're asking for preference for consultants, I kind of would like to stay with Martin. I think he's done a good job and quite frankly, at the time, I don't think we were able to really finish the session as early as I would have wanted. And I just, that's just, I like Brent Ives too, but I, I just, I don't know. I, I think that Martin kind of had some kind of vision on how, you know, he wanted to work with the board on doing that, but it's just one person's opinion. But I think I was on the, out of all the commissioners here, I think I was on, the only one on the board at that time. So that would be my preference. That matters, Jim, are you asking between BHI and Roush?
I need.
I, I think we should.
I would go out and ask for their response to the, our idea of updating the plan.
Yeah.
And then get a quote on their estimated cost. And then come back to the board with a recommendation of either BHI or Roush.
Okay. I think we should update it, especially with all the new property acquisitions and finances. And I think it could be a good way to be more public about some of the things we're doing because this would, this update, if we had a meeting, would be a public meeting as well.
Catherine?
I would look at this as a continuation of the current adopted master plan because the board had issues in 2020.
Yes.
And I think this would be a way to finish or, or to continue. I like the fact that we're doing it. I think it's critical. Ed brought up something about the website. And I realize it's not, I would like to see maybe part of this is to include the website as part of, and accessibility as part of the master plan. I thought it was only me that had trouble finding things on the website because I'm kind of a technological goof. But the state is making special districts update their websites to specific structure and fundamentals. I know Sewer Authority Midcoast side is doing that right now. And I could see that these are two projects that could maybe go hand in hand. It's not necessarily part of this project, but in order for people to appreciate where the district is going, they need to be able to get the information and find out where it's been. But I, I am glad, I am glad we're doing this. I was excited when I saw it on the agenda. And would like for us to maybe work in, in, in a way, when we're doing this update, that the public can be involved without having to, number one, be here. And number two, figure out ways to do it through Zoom. I realize that the social issues that have caused districts problems with open access to the public, not only to their, their facilities and their offices, but to meetings and Zoom and so on. Hopefully, there will be some folks working on ways to protect special districts and we can just adopt the policies and procedures that they are doing. But I think, I think this is very important and we need to figure out how to, not, not, we can't mail a postcard to every, every household in the county, but put a, a good public relations program together telling people, this is what the district is doing. We're looking forward to the future. And maybe get some articles in the paper and, and also some ads in some of the local papers and websites.
George?
Similarly along the lines that Catherine was talking about, in 2018, there was a public workshop to go over the 2020 plan, get the public's input into what, what it's going to look like. I would assume we would do that again. 2018 was a different year and things were happening differently. But, but I, I think a specific public workshop Zoom meeting is doable. Been on Zoom meetings with 100 to 150 people. It's just got to be moderated the, the right way, but it can be done. And I think we ought to plan on doing that, that we'll, we set up a separate kind of Zoom meeting so that many people can participate. And maybe do it on a, on a Saturday, you know, the Zoom meeting, but, but, hey, you know, let's, let's get the maximum amount of public participation for this plan because it's kind of the guide of where this harbor is going to go in the future.
I, I have, I would recommend like a Thursday night or something because Saturday is kids' sports, fishing, soccer, football.
We can optimize the time where we get the most participation. You know, you, you know. And maybe we do it in, in two parts because I've been in meetings, public meetings, looking at master plans that start at seven and end at three in the morning. And that's something we don't want either. So, so, you know, but, but I think we can, we can moderate it that if it's, if it's going to be longer than a, than a few hours, we, we hold it over two days or something. I mean, we can figure that out. But, but I think it's very important to have the public's involvement.
I too agree that this is something we really need to do. And I assume at some point, we're going to want an ad hoc committee to work with, with you, Jim, on this. Is that, do you want to do that? Or we want to use the full, the full board?
Once a consultant is selected, ad hoc committee would be beneficial.
Yeah, I was going to say, we have to go through the selection process.
Right, okay.
That, that's going to come to the board.
Yes.
So when is that going to come back to the board? In December or do we have a special meeting?
I would, because the deadline I want to put on is by the end of the year.
Yeah.
So I want to start as soon as possible. So I'd like to have the consultant on board in January. So just, I'm hoping to get it back by December.
Well, we, we have a special meeting on December 11th for that.
We can bring it back to them if I can get the responses.
Yeah. Don't they should respond?
Yeah, I've already talked to both of them and they're both interested.
Okay, any further comment? Any further, further comment from the public on this? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve this.
Do we still have to do item number eight?
Are you asking for number four?
Number four.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Or do we want to, do you need a motion on this?
Or is just affirmed to affirm?
Just affirm that you can go ahead?
Motion would be best, I think.
I'll make the motion then. Two, yeah. That's to affirm the general manager's request to update the 2020 strategic plan and authorize him to obtain professional services of a consultant under the best value concept using the simplified procurement process.
Okay. It's been moved in second and we affirm general managers' desires here. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Slater Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Chain Crowley?
Hi.
Mr. Dahmer?
Yes.
President Zemke?
Hi.
Okay. Next, we will go back to item number eight that we pulled off of the consent calendar. Surfers Beach Restoration Pilot Project Eelgrass Mitigation ESA Proposal. John?
This is a motion to approve an increase in capital expenditure appropriations of $50,000 to cover district consultant ESA's continued engineering and planning costs for the Surfers Beach Restoration Pilot Project and required, permit required eelgrass mitigation efforts at Pillar Point Harbor. The board, over the last two months, had presentations from our consultant Damits regarding the, and updates on the project regarding the Surfers Beach Pilot Project, Beach Restoration Pilot Project. And actually approved additional monies for consultant Damits. Working with consultant Damits since 2018 was the design engineering team from ESA. And the board first approved a professional service agreement with ESA for $105,000 in 2018, then increased it to $226,000. And then now, because of the additional challenges that Damits explained to us over the last couple of months at our meetings, they continue to have challenges with, with the eelgrass and all of the costs associated with addressing the eelgrass mitigation has made it to where ESA's estimated monies that have already been pre-approved by the board have already been expended. So they're now estimating they'll need another $50,000 to take us all the way through project construction. We've got Bob Attalio, I believe, and Louis White. And I think Damits is on as well, if the board has any further questions.
Well, I, I pulled the agenda item.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I just, well, first of all, I think Brad has done a great job. So I just want to thank Brad. Thank you for doing a great job. The 50, it just, it just seems like everything is piecemealed right now. And so is $50,000 going to be enough? Or are you going to come back and ask for more? Because it just seems like this, I mean, this project has been going on since I was appointed on this, to this board in 2015. So we're nearing 10 years of, of this. And, and I know we're at the mercy of other agencies. And I think so far, we've been trying to work very, and have worked collaboratively with the Coastal Commission as much as possible. I just don't know how much more we're going to need. I mean, I know that the $50,000, based on this report, will cover the costs associated with additional surveys and a five-year post-project monitoring, right? So to me, what is the?
Virginia, thank, and commissioners, thank you for considering this proposal. My name's Louis White. I'm the project manager and engineer in charge of the project from ESA. And yeah, I want to clarify that the staff report that you just were quoting, I think it might have been mistakenly identifying what the, this money is for. This $50,000 estimate proposal is to finalize the engineering design plans, to update the plans, to reflect the recent changes that we've heard from the, the permitting agencies on the eelgrass mitigation site. And then also to provide bid period support services through the bidding process and selection of a contractor. And it doesn't include the construction period support, which would, as you are asking, it would, that would be another chunk of money that would need to be allocated in the future. And working with Brad Damits and coordinating with him, what we decided was to, let's get us through the bid process to select a contractor. And then once that contractor is selected and we understand that, we'll, we'll be coming back to the board to, to provide construction period support and engineering. So just to recap, the previous ask, over time, there were a number of unanticipated efforts that were needed, including a harbor-wide survey, considering the eelgrass implications on the design. And then we did get some more money to do the eelgrass mitigation design work. And then there were other unanticipated needs from the, the, from the permitting agencies that required us to shift some money around to a that required us to shift some money around to accommodate those immediate actions that were needed, and those were done in coordination with the district, in another direction, including a technical study to do a noise analysis for the habitat impacts and just a whole series of things that were needed. And so now we are just looking to backfill the bid period support and finalize the construction package, which is the drawings, the plans, and the specifications and estimate. And then I understand that the permitting is all like super close to being final. We've submitted everything that I think they've asked for, including recently a mitigation monitoring plan. And now this is just the the last step to getting this project out to bid.
So is the 50, it doesn't sound like the $50,000 is the end of these costs.
No.
Be more ongoing. But so are you saying that, okay, so first of all, the report doesn't reflect what you just said, so and I and I agree that that there's this difference. I'm not happy that this is the information that went out to the public because it's not full information that you had just described. And maybe I and I know that there's the attachment here with your proposed.
The attachment is the proposal was the scope.
I understand, but the summary was in the report as well, right? So anyway, in the future, as we move forward with this, because everyone's watching this project, I think that we need to be very clear on what exactly the work is the work that's being done based on the the associated costs, number one. Number two, how much more are we going to have to spend beyond this $50,000 based on what you have just outlined?
I don't have an estimate of the construction period support task, but it would require construction administration and engineering support through the construction period. And we can put that estimate together for you. I don't have the number right now.
That would that be a different phase after if like if this gets approved? I mean, it just just seems like everything is so piecemealed and we just don't know what that end cost is going to be. And, you know, after 10 years of uncertainties, at some point, there's a diminishing return on any kind of investment that we're making. And I'm not saying we shouldn't move forward, I just want to know anything, any estimate of what this might cost at the end for this final phase, which I think is important. I think we need to get to the finish line. I think the public expects it. I think we expect it, we want it, but just this dribble, these dribs of, you know, this approval for 50,000 or this approval for X number of dollars, just it's just it just seems so unreliable for the and unpredictable for the budget. And I know that that's my concern, our budget, yeah.
Well, that's that's the whole point is we need to know.
That's why you that was your concern, too.
Realizing full well that a budget is not cast in stone, but all of these small piecemealing additions add up, and this is a long project. And I I need to know what are we looking at overall for the next, you know, what so we have this segment in time, but then what are we looking at for for additional costs, say, over the next three years? Do we even have an estimate? We we try and have a five-year budget. We should this should be part of it.
If I could chime in on that for just a second, I definitely understand the, you know, the frustration with this kind of approach and the piecemealing, and it's been highly frustrating for myself and ESA as well because, you know, this has been unanticipated, these requests that are coming in from the permitting agencies over the years. We had agreement on the eel grass mitigation concept years ago, and it wasn't until we submitted permit applications and and the consultation with National Marine Fisheries Service started that we knew that we were going to have to address some of these things. This package that ESA is putting in right now is going to cover things like not only finishing up the permit requests and the plans for the project so we can get it out to bid, but also there's quite a bit of work involved in that bid process, answering questions from the contractors, back and forth, and, you know, meeting with the contractors on site, and we just want to make sure that we're prepared to do that in expedited manner so we can get this thing, you know, finally happening. All of the projects, you know, that I've worked on at the Harbor District, including the West Trail Living Shoreline, there's always a component that comes along with construction that includes, you know, the required monitoring that needs to be done for five years usually, and other things, and those are going to be unknown, you know, until we have the permit in hand and the condition. So while I appreciate the the kind of requests to understand what the exact costs are going to be, at this point, it is difficult and we can we can give you a better idea, but to really hone in and and get a precise number, you know, is really a tough situation.
Yes, the district have budgeted, I think, 6.5 million towards this project. The exact cost will be, we don't know, but this will this is just to get us to be able to put the bid out. Once we get the contractor selected and we know exactly what the permitting agencies will do, we'll have to come back to the board to get permission to proceed with that contractor at that cost, which will include the cost of the engineer and monitoring.
Right. So you're basically saying that this $50,000 is so that we can put the bid out?
Complete the process to put the bid out, yes. We were not expecting the significant questioning from NOAA right now. They last night again sent out more questions, which we're responding to. So this is again, this is this is, as the staff report says, to continue the engineering and planning costs for Surfers Beach Restoration.
I I.
We could have said incomplete, but it's to continue it and the exact cost to what they're going to charge us for supervision of the project, our management, and the actual construction cost, we will know those for locked in until we get the bids back.
Right. Right now, it just seems like things are coming in for money requests and dribs and drabs, and I I just it's I I don't think it's a great process. I mean, I understand why, but I also don't think it serves our needs as a board to understand it vis a vis the budget and the transparency issue for the public.
I agree.
We got to make that process a little more robust, I guess. I don't know how, I mean, if you want to work on that with Brad, I think the process piece is going to be important.
Okay.
Otherwise, I mean, I'll make a motion to approve an increase in the capital expenditure appropriations of $50,000 to cover District Consultant ESA's continued engineering and planning costs for the Surfers Beach Restoration Pilot Project and required eel grass mitigation efforts at Telepoint Harbor.
Second.
Okay, it's been.
Oh, sorry. There's a public comment, right?
Is there a public comment on this?
I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand, I'm reading this.
Oh, okay, let's take a public comment. Yeah.
Thank you, Jim. Brad, Louis, great to see you guys. I'd like to say that ESA has done a great job with this. I'd just like to remind you a little bit about the history of what's happened with this project. When this first started, and correct me, guys, if I'm wrong, but eel grass was not an issue. We have part of this project has to do with climate change and sea level rise, and climate change, I suspect, has something to do with why we're we're seeing eel grass in our harbor. It's a great thing. I'm happy to see, I don't know the details of what happened with the permitting with respect to NOAA, but I'd like to remind you all that when we first started this project, NOAA and the district and others worked together to find a way to make this project happen. So we've had a lot of support from NOAA over the years to make this happen, and these permitting issues just keep coming up. So I would say that the consultants have been very clear about how the budgeting how budgeting has happened with this and that none of us have been able to sort out exactly where it was going to go because of the timeline. Things have been changing and the permitting agencies agencies have been responding to the change changes, and then it ends up costing us more money. The one message to that is the sooner we get this done, the better. Thank you.
We're trying to.
Thank you, Ed.
I agree with that.
Okay, yes, George.
So I just want to make sure that that we all realize, again, and I've said this many times, that this project is a demonstration project. The most critical component of this project is be able to demonstrate what is happening. So there should be a way to make sure that we're getting, you know, in these proposals, the baseline data for pre, during, and post-construction monitoring, and that the data is there for people like the sanctuaries and the coastal commission to be able to see how things are functioning and working. Those are very critical components, if nothing else. Certainly, the eel grass component of it, people are going to be wondering and want that to be monitored. So there is a lot of these additional things that are happening, and and that's not troubling me, but I just want to make sure that that we still all remember that if we don't demonstrate or don't get the type of data we need to demonstrate, whether this is semi-successful or not successful in terms of the construction of that that beach and how long it lasts, you know, that's going to be very troublesome for us. So let's make sure that in these estimates for construction monitoring, post-construction monitoring, that we have the data elements collected that will help us kind of prove, you know, how how this thing can happen in the future.
Thank you, George. Okay, we have a motion. Can we have a roll call, please?
President Zemke.
Aye.
Mr. Domarat.
Aye.
Mr. Chan Corrali.
And I.
Mr. Slater Carter.
That brings us to the closed session. We're on to the agenda and is there any public comment on the closed session? Okay.
Okay, we're live.
Okay, we have returned from the closed session with no reportable items, which brings us to future agenda items. Are there any future agenda items people feel compelled to suggest?
The one I would like to see is to talk about updating our website to make it easier for the public to access stuff. I I think it's a good website, but when I'm looking for stuff, again, it has to be updated for technological inept, technologically inept people.
Me, yeah.
I'm not going to say anything.
We can do the we can look at our website, try to update it to that request and then bring it back to the board as a demonstration.
That would be excellent.
And and like I say, I remember hearing at CSDA or something about the necessity for the state getting involved in websites, so we need to do it anyway.
Yeah, our website has been reviewed and complied.
Oh, it does, okay. But then again, not for inept people like me.
We have a consensus on the board that that's a good agenda item. Any other future agenda items suggested, recommend? Okay, sounds like everybody's worn out. I will.
Second.
Take a the motion to adjourn.
So seconded.
Okay, it's moved in second that we adjourn. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Domarat.
Aye.
President Zemke.
Aye.
Mr. Chan Corrali.
Aye.
Mr. Slater Carter.
What is this green education thing?
Informal. For information. For your information.